Town and site and planning board, a reminder it's a public meeting, video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and for posterity. If you all please rise to the table. Please.
(inaudible).
Thank you all. Okay, first item on the agenda is the town acceptance of Mockingbird Lane. It seems like, sir?
(inaudible).
Yep, please.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church Green in Taunton. I represent Joseph Mizomes, the manager of St. Mark's LLC. There's been a, I understand that the town has accepted the roadway at the town meeting. There's been a request to release the bond. I've been included on town council's letter back to the board regarding the deed of the fee interest in the road back to the town, and I understand that that's a condition of the approval of the subdivision, and we'll have to pursue that deed. So that's something we're going to do. In the process of going through my file, or the file on this particular subdivision, there's also another condition in the, in the certificate of action approving the subdivision that required a conveyance of a parcel of land over to the town, and that, that was done back in, I believe, 2008. So that condition has been satisfied. And then there is a condition number eight that I'm going to ask the board to, if I may submit this letter, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
But essentially, condition number eight of the approval provides that upon completion of the ways, that the, the board shall reduce the bond to an amount of five percent of that which was required to assure construction of the roadway. And then it can be released when the deed is delivered. So based on condition number eight of the certificate of action, I'm asking the board to reduce the amount of the bond, which I believe, it's either seventy or seventy-five thousand dollars at this point. Reduce it to the amount of five percent of what the board, the town has on the bond, and retain that pending securing the deed to the fee of the road.
You want the bond to be five percent of the total project cost of what is left to do?
Correct, because the town has accepted it, so that constitutes acceptance that the road's constructed in accordance with the town specs and requirements. So that part of it is done. And what condition eight is, it talks about releasing down to five percent and then retaining pending receipt of the deed. So it's a two-step process in condition number eight. We probably should have been in here a long time ago to ask to do that, but that condition was, escaped me as we were working on other issues in the deed at prior times, in the other issues with the certificate of action at prior times.
So, so there's seventy thousand dollars left in work to do?
No, there's a bond with the town in the amount of seventy thousand dollars.
Right, I understand that.
So there's nothing, there's no construction left to be done.
So the only, so the thirty-five hundred dollars is, we're gonna hold on it, onto it until we get a deed?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, and that's what the condition says. Once the construction's completed, you release it down to five percent, and that covers any collateral issues that have to be done.
Well, what about all this business about the releases of?
They were, they're all done. The release of the deed and the easements, all of it?
Yeah, all the owners, this, from October, the-
Well, that's the deed. We're gonna have to get the signature of property owners over to the town for the ownership interest in the roadway. So that's the deed that we have to secure for the town.
Right. Wouldn't you be more inclined to get that deed post haste if we had seventy thousand dollars of your money?
Not everything's within my control, but that is the, the number eight is a condition of approval, so the town's gonna hold my feet to the fire on chasing the deed down, which I'll do. I'm simply asking that condition number eight allow the reduction in the bond amount.
How long do you think it'll take you to get that?
I've got it all ready to go, I just haven't circulated it yet.
Any questions from the, sir?
I have to speak on this.
Okay. Please do.
Chairman David Gay, town councilor. I agree with Mr. Brennan most of, almost completely, not quite, but almost, that town did accept the roadway, so as far as construction is concerned, that that's no longer an issue. What happened was that when we went to make sure that the town would get good title, we concluded that unlike Sylvia Way, which by the way is recorded, that's completed, I'll get the papers back within a couple of, well, in a couple of weeks, and I'll get them to the town clerk, so that's all done, Sylvia Way. And actually spelled the name right this time, so we got that done. But, in that one, they did reserve the title. In this one, they failed to do that. So my two issues are this. Yes, Mr. Brennan can get a deed, and I hope that he was able to, be able to do that relatively quickly. However, I mean, homeowners being homeowners, they may have questions whether they'll sign right away or not, that's their problem. The problem that we face, and it's not a critical one, because this isn't like fifty lots, but each of these lots, I presume, I don't know, we haven't completed a title exam on each lot, but I'm gonna presume that most of them at least have a mortgage. So if they have a mortgage, we get a deed, that's all good, as long as they pay the mortgage. If they sell the house, we'll be fine, 'cause our deed will, they won't be able to sell anything that they've already deeded to us, and the mortgage obviously would be paid off. If for some reason, there's a foreclosure on one of these, then that portion of the title would be a problem. Now, is it a critical problem? No, let's be realistic, it's not a critical problem, but it is a problem, it's a technical problem. So I don't know what the, not the amount of money would be necessary to ensure that that doesn't happen. Banks can be very fidgety about releasing, partial releases of mortgages, especially if they have banks that are, like Bank of America, Chase Bank, God bless you, you're gonna take some time to get that. Local banks, not a real problem generally. It says five percent, he's right, it does say five percent of the total project cost. I don't know what that means, total project cost. I know what I think it means, but I have no idea what that figure is. It isn't five percent of seventy thousand necessarily, it's five percent of the total project cost. So if we can confirm whatever that is, that figure, then I would agree that that bond should be reduced to that amount of money. Is that gonna be enough to ensure us to get good title? I don't know. Probably, thirty-five hundred is not a small amount of money, but it, it would help if, if we got releases from, how many lots are there at? Five?
Six.
Six? There's not many. So the big, it isn't a huge problem. But let's say we can get releases of four to five of the six lots. Then getting that last one may take some time, but it shouldn't be a huge amount of money to get it. I mean, I've been dealing with Chase Bank on something that involves a diocese and property indictments, taking me three years to get them to get even respond. So it takes time. But I really don't have a problem with releasing the bond down to five percent. I think somebody has to calculate whether this thirty-five hundred is actually five percent of the total project cost. If it is, let's, and I, I know Mr. Brennan well enough to know he'll do his job, but it may not be as easy as it may appear at times, but I don't think it's anything that we should hold a tremendous amount of money for.
Sir, I have one question for you. So we're asking, requesting the homeowners to give up that portion of land of their property that is in the way, the street now?
Yes and no, Tom. I mean, when they bought the property, they bought Lot A on a plan, but because there was no reservation of rights, under the, what they call the derelict statute, they theoretically owned to the center line of the street, because that wasn't reserved. So they own Lot A plus the center line of the street for the frontage that they have, let's say it's a hundred feet. So that hundred feet, they own to the center line. If it was an unpaved way and it wasn't in existence, they could eventually use that at some point. But it's a public way, so their ownership is subject to the right of others to travel over it. So I don't really see it as a big problem, it is a technical problem.
Was the square footage, the minimum square footage required part of that?
Shouldn't be.
Does each lot now have less square footage?
No, I would, I would say no. I mean, I haven't done a title in each lot, but I would say no.
The lots were calculated to the layout.
Right, that would be the way they went on.
But Attorney Gay's referring to-
So they all had thirty-five thousand square feet?
Oh yeah, they should.
Besides that section.
Exactly.
And the technical ownership to the center line of the road is subject to the rights of all the other property owners to use it. So no one can put up a toll gate or anything. It's just something in the law to prevent no man's land and no ownership of something.
I guess my last question, so there's no risk of a financial liability to the town?
No.
At all?
Not really, no.
Okay.
It's more of a technical issue than it is anything else.
What would be the worst scenario that could happen for the town?
One of the lots could get foreclosed upon, there'd be a cloud on our title, but so what? We're not deeding the property to anybody else, it's a road. Like Ed says, and I said earlier, it's subject to everybody else's right to re, to re-go over it. The town's accepted it, it's gonna be a public way, we're gonna plow it and maintain it, et cetera. It's a technical problem. That's all. That's why I don't wanna make a big deal out of it. If you wanna go with thirty-five hundred dollars and not do any more calculations, I don't have a problem with that.
What could we do in the future to prevent this, the next time a subdivision comes?
Well, I really don't know, except you, your, your conditions do say they have to convey title to the town. Most, most, I mean, I think this is just an oversight that, I don't know, you know, somebody missed. It isn't totally unusual, in fact, you go back many years, towns never even bothered to accept subdivision roads a lot of times. And in a lot of public ways that, you know, go back a long time, never been accepted either. It isn't critical, but it is in your regulations, so there's a, there's a requirement for them to do it. And like I said, Sylvia Way did, did it correctly.
So it was just an oversight?
It was an oversight.
Is it something that the language of the rules and regulations can be changed to add a reminder, so that the, you know, the, the road is reserved?
Sure, you could make it more clear if you want, and it's not, that's not a concern, yeah. Could you give the board the appropriate? Sure. Thank you.
To approve the, the reduction to thirty-five hundred dollars?
A second.
On favor?
I, I-
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You.
(inaudible) seconded that vote.
Bob did.
No.
Oh.
Tom.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
My stereo ears are mixed up. Okay, next item on the agenda is the ISM Solar Design Dyson III LLC changes the plans.
Where would you like me to set this up?
There's fine.
So I'll speak, do I need to be over there where the, okay.
I guess there's not fine.
Sorry.
Back and forth then, if you want to take that. All right, here we go.
Here, do you have this?
Yes, thank you.
Hopefully everybody can see this, okay?
No, I'm glad. Yeah, okay.
Do you have a printed version?
Excuse me?
Do you have a printed version?
Yeah, I have, oh, but what, what's up? Oh, Mr. Chairman, let me first of all introduce myself. My name is David Albrecht, I'm a professional engineer with Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. We're located in Lowell, Massachusetts. I've been before this board before, I don't know, three or four years ago, so nice to see you all again. With me tonight is Josh Farkas, he's our project developer for this particular project. Let me just, most of the plans up here are actually plans you've already approved from Outback Engineering and ISM Solar, so there's five copies of our plans.
This is the, the second phase on the other side of the, of the power line?
Correct, correct, yes. So just recently, we acquired this project from ISM Solar. We are now responsible for constructing it, for someone, an owner that we're working with. And in order to do so, we need to make some slight modifications to the plan, and we wanted to come in for you on an informal basis to find out what your thoughts were and how to proceed. We would hope that you all feel this is considered a minor modification, but what I'll do is I'll, I'll describe briefly the approved plan, and then I'll show you a plan of, of which is, you now have a eleven by seventeen version of it. So as you mentioned, Chairman, this is the second phase of the project, and it's on the other side, or the west side of the power line easement. You may recall that the access to this project was, here's the first phase, Elm Street is way over there, north is straight up. The access is from here, is along the south side, through the easement, and then into the site. You worked with Outback Engineering to approve the design, the stormwater management, the fence line, the tree line, the access, a number of other things on the plan as well, of which we will incorporate all of those things in our plan. I can tell you that our plan uses the exact, this is sort of a larger scale, with Elm Street over here, that we're gonna be utilizing the same access route to the south of the first phase. We're gonna be crossing the easement in exactly the same location we've actually applied to the utility company for an ascent agreement to cross the easement, so we've started that process with their real estate property department. Really, the only changes we're proposing to the project are, in order to make it more, I'll, I'll call it constructable, is we'll, we fully design it in three D, so all the racking is designed in three dimensions, so the road, the road spacing changes a little bit with the topography of the site. We also want to more centrally locate the equipment area. The equipment area from the previous project, the true project, was down in this location, where the, the line, the, the new medium voltage cable conduit comes in, and everything was in this sort of southeast corner of the site. That's not an ideal location to design a project. You want it more centrally located, so your, your lower level lines are not quite so long, right? To serve this here, you have to come all the way through, if you're here.
Is that because of attenuation?
Yeah, it's, power losses and everything. So we've located that right in this location here, and we've put the road here. So this road from here to here is coming out, and we're putting a new road in here. This, this area here, the only, the only other change that we're proposing, a couple of changes, is we're gonna be using, I'll call it a reel module, that has reel dimensions. The previously proposed project had sort of a nondescript module that, you know, in the submission, it didn't say it's this manufacturer and this wattage, and which has this physical dimensions. So we're doing that. Our racking, our modules, in three dimensions will be designed, and we're gonna completely stay within the existing fence, the proposed fence is not changing. The tree clearing line is not changing. The stormwater management features are not changing. The grading is not changing. So it's really everything inside the fence, there's gonna be some slight modifications to the road spacing. The height of the racking will not change, this is still the same height rack as, as previous. The, the one other change that we're proposing is in the equipment area, we're proposing an energy storage unit, so a battery. That's gonna be, it's one, and it is a four thousand kilowatt hour battery. It's essentially a shipping container, you know, it's fancy, fancier than that, but it's about fifty-three feet long, eight feet wide, about twelve feet tall. And all, what they do is they bring that in, they put it on a foundation, and then they bring in all the lithium ion batteries, there's no liquid whatsoever. The, the energy storage unit is equipped with HVAC to keep everything cool in the summertime, 'cause the batteries do warm up and they need to be kept at a certain temperature. There's a fire suppression system that floods, it's a flooding agent that floods the, with gas, which floods the, the container in case of a spark, even just a spark. And ahead of all that, there is, it's continually monitored twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, so we know when any battery, any part of the system is sort of out of whack. We, we know that by the way. We, we operate and maintain these after we construct them for our, for our customers.
And what, what is the purpose of the battery? Is it storing the?
It's storing the energy, and it releases that energy in accordance with an agreement we have with, with the utility.
How big is it, did you say?
It's four thousand kilowatt hours.
Okay.
So as far as, as far as sort of capacity, it's sort of a ambiguous, ambiguous number, but the size of it is, it's a shipping container. If, if you drive by a semi-trailer truck-
Twenty foot or forty?
It's the, it's the fifty-three footer.
Oh.
So when you drive by one, and it says fifty-three feet on the side of it, it's really everything from above there, but that's pretty much it.
I know what you mean.
Yeah. And everything else is gonna stay the same, our medium voltage connection all the way out to Elm Street, the poles that were proposed, that's all, that's all exactly the same. So I wanted to, we wanted to talk with you informally to find out what you thought of this and how you wanted to proceed.
So the first question before us, is this a minor modification or a major modification?
Sounds pretty much it.
Be it, and then if it's a, what, either one, then the changes that you propose, then we would approve or, or not. First, first order of business is, is it minor or major? Peter, have you had any experience with those battery?
No, I have not.
Containers? And it's, you say it's on a foundation, or it's on a slab?
It's, it's more than likely gonna be on two strip foundations.
Okay.
It's how we do it. It's usually up about six inches above the ground.
So it's not sitting on a slab?
Yeah, they're, they're heavy enough where a slab would need to be just, you know-
Yeah, it's a steel box.
Yeah.
So you don't want it on a slab because of the moisture between the two?
Right. Easy access to anything that comes up through the bottom, you know, if you have a six inch crawl space, it's a little bit easier.
I'm leaning towards a minor myself, but I would prefer to have Peter look at all the new drainage, I don't think, you're saying ain't, nothing's changed, but I think I would prefer your opinion, myself.
Yeah, there was, we do have, I think, an aqua hearth protection zone out there that we were skirting on the original design.
Correct, yeah, I can point to that on here, I don't know if you can see this hatched area here. So we've taken all of our electrical equipment, our transformers, you know, the transformer has liquid in it, I think we talked about that three or four years ago, it's, it's oil, it's vegetable oil, ninety-nine point eight percent of it. That was actually, used to be in the aqua for protection, now that's out of it. So, and then we've taken, we've taken the majority of the road out of the protection district as well, so that will all remain pervious in that area, except for right here.
Wasn't the location of the road part of the reason for it being there for fire, the fire chief's requirements?
Yeah, the fire chief still has access. He has access along here. There's, there is a gate here that will have, we have, we're still maintaining a turnaround right here, so he can come in and turn around. I don't know if you can see the dash line, but it stops right there, instead of all, I mean, if he wants to go all the way there, we can maintain that.
All right, all right, I got you.
But we have it stopping here, and he'd have, on all, on all the gates, both, both the vehicular gate, the main gate into the system, plus we will put mangates around on all of the other three sides, a four-foot mangate, they'll all have knockboxes in accordance with the fire department.
Has the fire chief seen this?
He has not, he has not.
Yeah, we're not approving it, we're, the reason is just to decide, is it minor or major? And Tom's comment is, wants to get Peter's input of whether it's minor or major, and I don't know if that requires a take-home review of the plan, or if he can say something-
I, I think, I think it's not a, you know, I mean, are they, are you, I have just a little trouble following. Are we changing any access road? Is that the only changes to the access roads right there?
Right, we're taking this out, and we're putting that in.
Okay, from the Elm Street up to there, it's-
All is exactly the same.
The same, okay. I kinda think it's a minor, but you know, we just asked them to submit a, you know, application that will provide the information on, you know, the new, new equipment, and I guess any changes to the stormwater, because we did have a infiltration trench in there, and how that's gonna be, are you relocating that?
We're, we're gonna maintain that, it'll probably not be exactly, exactly the same location, because it was kinda wrapped around-
Where the equipment was.
The road, yeah, and the equipment, so we can actually kinda, I think there were two of them.
Yeah, so you-
We can, we can combine them into one area, and if we can, if we can make an equivalent area, we would do it, we would do it in that same area of the site, 'cause that's the lowest area.
I think you get the information on the new equipment that's going out there, then how, where the trenches are going, and-
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
Before we do anything, Tom, you had a comment about the entrance problems with the erosion?
It's not so much erosion, when, on the construction, the, the primary structure in our construction vehicles, the very shoulder where it meets asphalt-
Was compromised. The asphalt's not broken, it's just a lot lower, it causes, just needs to be filled.
This is, this is out at the entrance, the current entrance to Elm Street?
At Elm Street, yeah.
Way over here?
Yes.
So the, the current, the current owner of the, of the project-
Right.
Same owner owns both?
They do, yes.
So not just straight out, but you know, how the vehicle turns and you get a flare or the radius of the turn, that just needs to be filled in.
Okay, well, we can pass that on.
So I'm a little concerned with the roadway going in, we're crossing the wetland. When we were out there last year, it was overflowing, I mean, it was coming over the road. They said that there was a culvert there underneath. There is nothing, there's no pipe underneath there.
Can you, can you show me where that?
It's, you see where the, the first array is, and then the road going to the second?
So right between here and here?
Yep, right in there. That road is in tough shape.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see what it looks like today, because on last, our last visit there, it was a mess. And you're gonna be driving more vehicles, of course, over there. And the last time I saw it, it was a real mess. So I, before any other construction goes on, I think that area needs to be looked at, and make sure that that road is, gonna be, you know, strong enough to withstand all the vehicles going back and forth without making any more erosion.
Sure.
I, and maybe there should be something there to let that water go through. I think it's a problem.
We can pass that on too, and look at that, yeah, we certainly wanna have a safe-
I mean, it didn't look good at all that time, and I raised concern, and nobody else seemed to care, but-
Was that during the construction of this one?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I was on site probably three or four times in August, September, and October. Obviously, that's, it's pretty dry at that time of year, yeah. So we actually have not been, we haven't been there in months, other than, you know, from then until now, so-
I don't think that roadway was built correctly in the first place, okay, that's just my opinion, I'm not an engineer, I don't, I don't want- I don't, I don't want to be in there. Okay, but.
You're not in my song.
When these things are going through, these are big projects and there's a lot of money being dumped in. And nobody sees what it looks like back there, you know? But there's wildlife being disturbed, there's wetlands being disturbed. And, and you know, if there was a situation back there that our fire trucks had to go back there, we need a good run for them. So I, I would like to look at that.
And we can, we can look at that.
Like Tommy said, Mr. Coz here, the entrance of that looks terrible. You know, there's a lot of money being made, a lot of money being spent. But what about, you know, what it looks like to the neighbors and the residents? You know, they, they promised the world they're going to fix this, they're going to plant bushes, they're going to do this. Where is the stuff? You know, it's not showing up. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, one of the things I'd say is we've, we've been around for a couple of months on this project and obviously the initial construction probably goes back a couple of years to when it first started. Our intention, just, you know, it's just for reference and understanding, for this new array to be owned by the same group that owns the current array, the first system. So they're a customer of ours and we, we build roads for them all the time. We obviously weren't around for the construction of the first one. However, I, I think without a doubt we can address it. Actually, our customer, just to give a little more background, purchased these arrays from another, from another ownership group. So they, our customer actually wasn't the, the financer of the initial, of the initial construction. So I think what I would say is our group is going to put us through some rigorous standards for, for road standards that we have for our project. So I bet you it's higher than what the original was. That won't necessarily be reflected on the existing plan, but we'll, we'll have to adhere.
Yeah, we'll, when we submit the package to you, we'll report on, we'll report on the road and the entrance and whatever else. I mean, if there's something else.
When you go out there, you'll check to make sure that that falls.
And also input from the fire department, I think, would be visual changes to turnaround.
Correct. Yeah, we're actually giving.
It seems better, but.
We're giving him actually more, more room to turn around.
Yeah, it does appear that way, but we should, we would want to.
So ahead of the next time we meet, it would, it would be wise to be with the chief? That would be, okay. And we can do that.
It's a minor.
Wonderful. So if I could, Chairman, when is the, what is the timing for making a submission to you all so you have time before the, before whatever meeting we end up seeing each other on?
Two weeks from tonight. Are you ready for that?
I don't know. So you would, I'm sorry, would you need it? Generally, do you like it a week before? Because you're not going to notice it or anything and we don't have to do a butter notification, so it's just a.
Right. So yeah, we need, oh, Peter needs a week.
Okay, so why don't we plan on, we'll make a, we'll make a submission before the end of the year and then we'll just meet sometime in January?
First and third week in January.
First and third.
So January 2nd or January 16th?
January 2nd.
Yeah.
I'm going to be skiing.
Okay.
So let's not make it January 2nd.
January 16th.
January 16th is, is fine. That gives, that gives us a lot of time. That gives the chief, the chief some time, that gives Peter some time, so.
Okay, so I'll put you on the agenda.
He's laying that down.
I'll send you, I'll send you whatever that is. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Can we send this, the information that we sent to you, can we just forward it right to Peter?
Yes.
Can we forward it right to Peter?
Yeah.
Can we forward it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Now, Terry, why didn't Brook Street Solar get put on the agenda to seven, not, not earlier?
It actually, well, I didn't know how long this was going to be. You can go earlier.
We can?
Yes, you can. There, there was no, a butter notification, it was just continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
So you can go ahead. I was just trying to, in light of.
Yeah, I understand.
Prevalent meetings.
Understand. Yeah, I just didn't want to have to wait for 25 minutes and then have them have to leave at 7:30 for conservation.
Yeah, and they didn't have a meeting with Conservation Commission at 7:30 as well, so.
So next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the special permanent site plan review for TJ, TJ A Solar Zero Brook Street Map 16 Lot 28 for the solar array and system.
Good evening. I'm Christopher King with Atlantic Design and Studios here on behalf of TJ Solar. Just a quick recap, I know it's only been a week, but as we all know, Peter was not here and he had issued a letter with some outstanding issues, some of which were already contained on the plan, some of which were notes which we went over item by item last week. And so what I've done is we've incorporated those changes into a final plan set that's dated today. Just for reference, we also received a letter yesterday from Norver Armstrong requesting some pullbacks of some gravel surfaces as far away from the 50 foot buffer as we could make happen. And so that is also picked up. So with that, if it makes sense, I'd like to run through the engineering issues, give Peter a chance to respond and make sure, you know, our understanding is the same. And then I know Attorney Pacella is also here to speak about, you know, legal opinion as far as the Brook Street extension. So I do have response letters prepared responding to Peter's comments. If it helps, I have a copy for everyone if you'd like a copy.
Sure.
To facilitate what I'm going to be going through. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll just kind of start at the first item. There's a detail for an equipment pad that includes spill prevention measures. So I have provided in this letter, there's, as the gentleman for the project before this referenced, the cooling oil in the transformers is typically.
Did you have all these?
Yep. I'm sorry. That picks up the four inch change in the stone differently. So the equipment pads, the transformers have a mineral or vegetable based cooling oil. We provided the material, safety data sheets and some frequently asked questions for a manufacturer that's typically used in this region. Any cooling oil is going to be similar to this where it's, again, excuse me, vegetable or mineral based oil that's soluble and biodegrades in 28 days and all that's in the information I've just provided. So based on that, we've included a detail for this type of use which is appropriate, which basically has what they call a housekeeping pad that the equipment will sit on itself. That sits on a bed of stone and there's an actual secondary pad in between those two. So that and, you know, due to the non-toxic nature of the cooling oil, this equipment pad and the detail is going to be very close to what's actually installed on the site. You know, during the procurement process, depending on availability, they may select something different, but it's going to be, it's going to have the same components as what's shown here. And so that seems to be adequate again for this type of use. Some of the comments were asking for pieces of information just quite frankly aren't available at this time. And so we're just respectfully asking that they be required prior to the issuance of the building permit. Again, once the, the system installer is selected, we'll certainly make that information available to the board. Signage was another piece of information. There's a little bit of interpretation that we still need as far as the size of the actual sign. But the content of the sign itself is pretty specific per the solar, per the solar bylaw for the information that it needs to include. And so we've added notes to the front entrance sign that just restates that the signage shall not only include the information within the solar bylaw, but also here is section 3300, which is the signage bylaws. The final size and location requires basically further interpretation from the building inspector. We've tried, go ahead.
Just, Chairman, just, do you have any to make any comments as we go along?
Please, please do.
I mean, I'm okay so far with what he's been presenting and we'll just confirm as we go along.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Yep. So once we get the interpretation from the building inspector, the final sign package, you know, we'll be conforming with the bylaws and submit it to the board prior to the start of the building process. Four and five, we feel no responses required. We, you know, to limit impacts, we went over this last week. We have a series of poles out by the road, but other than that, we're all underground. We've added visual screening per the site walk. Another one of Norver Armstrong's comments was we were trying to introduce or propose what they call a cultivar, which is basically a genetically modified type of species. We're using the green giant cultivar because it grows a little bit more aggressively. In the jurisdictional areas, they asked that we use something that's native. And so we've spread it out. We've included three species. Three species within the jurisdictional areas, still including an arborvitae, but the, the native arborvitae in addition to white pine and hemlock, which are also native plantings which they're looking for in the jurisdictional area. I've added a legend for the different plant types, plants outside, which we still intend to use the green giant arborvitae, but plants inside are this symbol. And the sheet cage has been picked up so that you can see outside of jurisdiction of the darker symbols with the green giants and then inside are the native species within the jurisdictional area. Comment six was the emergency response plan. Again, we'd submitted plans and a plan to the fire chief, Chief McGee, and actually today he sent an email confirming that he's satisfied with the materials that were resubmitted. Comment seven.
Can I just say on that one, just, I guess the, have you actually confirmed the emergency response plan with him?
Uh, I didn't specific and I don't recall exactly verbatim what his email said, but not typically, but a lot of times.
Let me just add this. I think we should just add as a condition of approval that the emergency response plan should be finalized before the, you know, issuance of a, before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yes, and we're absolutely amenable to that. And if you wanted to allow the police department as well to shed input in that and add them in that coordination effort, you know, again, we're certainly amenable to that. But the, the one that we've submitted is site specific and covers just about everything that we had talked about prior to submitting it. But comment seven was the applicant should confirm the form of surety. And so as we discussed last week, a, we'd like to offer a bond, a bond amount for, for the cost of decommissioning, adding in 2% inflation over the course of 20 years, which is the life of the project. So in the letter, we've, that equates to $139,300. And so again, we're amenable to making that a condition of approval, that that bond be provided prior to the certificate of occupancy, if the board is amenable to that. Comment eight is submit evidence to confirm that the fire department has reviewed the layout of the access drive. And again, we've, we've received that confirmation today. The maintenance, comment nine was specific to the maintenance for the basin located at the rear of the field. And so again, in talking with Peter, you know, due to the fact that we're not having a huge impervious area and not a lot of sand and stuff like that, maintenance is really going to be limited to clearing of some like leaf debris, mowing, inspections, small machinery or man, manpower driven. And so I removed a half a rack of panels, if you will, and increased this to 15 feet to make sure I have 15 feet clear all the way from the turnaround down to this basin, which should easily accommodate any kind of maintenance activities required in that area.
I would agree with that.
Comment 10 was just in regards to vehicular safety and just roadway safety, additional signage at the entrance. As we talked about last week, there are a couple of signs here that have the dead man curve arrows, curve arrows facing in either direction. That's right in the middle of our entrance corridor, if you will. And so we have a note on the plan and we're amenable to making it a condition of approval that will work with Tom to basically replace or add any signage that he deems required to make it a safe situation out there.
And I suggest that be a condition that it's, you know, these are completed prior to the certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, sure. And if there are signs that we need to remove for construction and there are signs that he would like installed sooner rather than later, we're cer, we'll certainly, you know, do as directed. Comment 10, I'm sorry, comment 11 was the width of the level spreader for the basin located in the front. And so I've kind of reorientated it and beefed it up a little bit. It's not only, it's a pretty big level spreader with some additional rip wrap just to make sure we're kind of creating like a plunge pool and not a channelized flow promoting downgrading and erosion. Again, I've adjusted the fence line and the rip wrap in this area to stay outside of the 50 feet. It's kind of tucked in the corner there, but I'm hoping that, you know, increasing that and, and kind of rotating it a little more perpendicular with the corner there is going to be adequate.
I haven't got a really chance to review that, but I, I think, you know, improvements
Methods to prevent erosion at the entrance drive and adjacent shoulders at basically the crossing area. So on the crossing detail, we acknowledge that there are some steeper slopes than we would like to see, but I mean, and that's due to the height of the crossing that's required to adhere to the stream crossing standards for mass DEP. So what we've done is we've added a note and a detail requiring rip wrap slope protection in the event the slopes are in excess of two to one. And then in talking with Peter, to prevent maintenance nuisance and potential washout of the stone on the north side of the crossing, we've beefed up that, size of that stone. And that in conjunction with the small area, it's not going to generate a lot of flow or velocity coming off of there. And so the larger stone will prevent erosion of that material. And it's, you know, in our operation and maintenance plan as well, we also have roadway maintenance, which requires them to inspect the roadway, replace anything, which I don't think will be an issue here, but make sure that everything is tidy, particularly out at the entrance. So I believe that those two items will, would address that concern. I'm going to let Attorney Pacella speak about comment 13 and skip to 14. A note regarding unsuitable soils encountered during the excavation of the infiltration basin. And so that note is on the detail sheet for the infiltration basin detail and it requires the contractor to, if they encounter unsuitable soils, laterally over excavate by three feet and then also dig down until they reach suitable soils and replace that basically with perch sand. And so we have a note requiring that and then we have a note requiring testing of the replacement material to ensure that it meets the design parameters that we initially had.
Just so the board understands, when he's saying unsuitable soils, it's soils that don't have the required percolation rate.
I, my question is, when you do that digging, are you going to be on site to inspect this or at all?
The board, our firm will provide any inspections that the board wishes and typically that is, that is one of, that's the most critical.
I would like that, yes. But that's one that I would like to see, yes, the inspector.
Sure.
That's the most important part of the project.
Yes, it is. Sure, certainly would be amenable to that.
Yeah. And the board's represented will be able to.
During the excavation of the storm. During the excavation of the stormwater basins to make sure that no unsuitables, and then even take it a step further, that if unsuitables are, when we bring in the new material, they're going to have to do that testing, and if you would like to witness that as well, we could certainly wrap that all in.
When you have the hole open before you start adding sand, that's when I would like to see.
Number 15 is the construction period pollution prevention erosion sediment control plan. Again, typically, this will run hand-in-hand with the, the SWIP runs hand-in-hand with the construction general permit that's required for the land disturbance that we file with the EPA. And so, we would just ask that that be provided prior to the start of construction, and that typically gives us a chance to meet with, or at least get some feedback from the site contractor. He kind of gives us an approach, and then we can tailor the SWIP to be site-specific and project-specific. So, we'd be asking that the board make that a condition of approval, is to provide the SWIP prior to the start of construction. And that was a comment from Norv Armstrong as well, as part of conservation, and they were amenable to making that a part of the order of conditions, a special condition as well.
I'm okay with that.
And then, the last issue, we're mounting calculations due to the bottom of the basin being within the four feet for DEP, and so we provided those mounting calculations with a mound, proving that the mound does not intercept the bottom of the basin, and we've run that for a 72-hour, three-day time period as required by DEP.
I need to take a look at that, I haven't had a chance, that came in today.
So, I believe those are the remaining outstanding issues. I've highlighted basically all of the changes as well that we've done for Norv Armstrong. The only other shift, if you will, was this section of the gravel road here. Again, I shifted it down a little less than 10 feet, just to get it out of the 50-foot. The tree line barely changed because I have a swale here catching kind of the hills, some of the hillside, so the geometry, we kept the same turning radii. The fire chief has not seen this, but again, we've run the vehicle simulations, and that's the same geometry, same turning radii, same shoulder, same roadway width, and so, again, this basically mimics the other road, except it's just slightly shifted out of the 50 feet.
Is there a maintenance schedule, like, in the fall to clear those basins there? Is there any maintenance schedule at all that you have, or that you can?
Yes.
I'm kind of concerned about leaves and things like that filling these things up, and then, I mean, I.
Yeah, there is a schedule for that. They have to check the inlets and not restore the pipes and all the control structures.
And that's included in the stormwater report, which was submitted, which presumably we referenced, so, again, that's binding with the project. I believe those are the, all the outstanding issues from the engineering standpoint. If you have any questions specific to those, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have any questions.
No, I'm good.
Let's go back to number 13.
Lucky number 13.
Lucky number 13, and so that the public is aware of what that is, we received a legal opinion letter from our attorney, and our attorney has a different, he disagrees with the conclusions of the applicant's attorney about the right of way. And to try to boil it down, the two reasons is that Mass General Law's Chapter 82, Section 32A is part of the yada, 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 blah, blah, blah. Our attorney's not here. But the second more important reason is that, in the case of Nylander v. Potter, this is case law, it sets forth the law relating to the access of abutters to the entirety of discontinued public ways. That case expressly holds the opposite of Attorney Pacella's conclusions, that his client can use Brook Street Extension, on and on and on and on. So, what we have now is a dispute as to whether they have a legal right to go over what is known as Aubrey's Lane. And now, I will cede the floor to.
Attorney Pacella, thank you very much. So, my name again, Joseph M. Pacella, I represent the applicant in this case. My first blush, we've submitted our letter requesting that the planning board obviously sent that out to counsel. That was three weeks ago. So, I received this at about 3:00 today. I didn't see it until I was already on the road. I think you've been provided some quick comments I made from the road, but I want to get to them more in-depth because I don't believe there's any dispute as to the law. I think the dispute is as to the facts being applied to the law, and I've brought the case of Nylander versus Potter, which is the only case that the attorney for the planning board cited, which stands for the exact same premise that I cited to you. It actually quotes verbatim what I rely on in my letter, and I'm going to just, I'm just going to walk you through that. So, in Nylander versus Potter, okay, our highest court decided in 1996 that, decided against the person seeking to have access to a discontinued and abandoned way, okay? They found as fact, and I'm reading from Nylander versus Potter, which I will give this copy to the board, it's not the best copy, but it shows it, and I've highlighted the areas that are of import. Just the Superior Court had determined, so these are facts that were looked at on appeal, determined that the Bachelor Road, which is the one they're fighting over, so you have, you have an abut, not an abutter, you have an entity that has its own separate access to a public way, saying, "I can run my utility lines down that discontinued road." By the way, that road was discontinued in 1879, and the abutter on both sides of that road is the same entity, Nylander. So, Nylander says, "The road's gone, you can't put your poles there, I own it." It was discontinued in 1879, and, and when I say discontinued, not for maintenance, abandoned, okay? They made a finding of fact that it was abandoned in the Superior Court, and so the attorney's belief, maybe I'm looking at this a little late in the game, is that somehow that says something different than what I proposed. It doesn't. It says that with those facts, with a person who has separate access and doesn't, isn't even an abutter to that way, where a road has been abandoned, you can't just suddenly get public access back. And so, they say they determined that the Bachelor Road was public until it was discontinued in 1879. Record doesn't support Potter's claim. We therefore accept that conclusion. So, they're reviewing this with the understanding that that's an abandoned road. We don't have an abandoned road in our case. In our case, what I've submitted is a couple of things. I will add to that of something else. So, I've cited in my letter this statute, which is Chapter 40, Section 15, which is unaddressed in the attorney's comments. This is a copy for the record, and what it says is, is that to abandon a road, you've got to have two-thirds vote of the deciding entity in a city or town, whether that's selectmen or city council. Two-thirds vote at a public meeting to authorize the conveyance of land or the abandonment of such easement or right. So, if there's a prescriptive easement, which is what you get when you're landlocked as a property, the lawyer's response to you says, "Well, you would have access if the property was landlocked." Clearly hasn't looked at the plans, maybe that's because it's referred to a second lawyer. The plans show, this is a landlocked parcel. So, there's a prescriptive easement regardless, based on what your lawyers told you. And what a prescriptive easement means is that you can't, the town can't simply, if the town had abandoned this road, we would still maintain a right of way by a prescriptive easement, okay? But what I've shown you is that we provided a copy, a 40-50-page title search, showing nothing's been filed on record. In pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 15, you've got to have a two-thirds vote to abandon a road, which they did have in the Nylander case, they abandoned it in 1879. I don't even know if the statute was around, but it was in 1974 when the, when the action was taken in this town. The statute requires that it be put on record, that you have the vote, two-thirds vote, and then it be put on record in the registry of deeds. We provided a title search that shows there is nothing on record in the registry of deeds showing that that particular way was ever abandoned. So, these are facts that we're talking about, not the law. Those are facts, those are uncontroverted. There's nothing that the lawyer can add to that to indicate something different. And then, what we have is the 1974 annual report for the town of Dayton, issued at the end of the year, saying that number 27 voted, and I gave you a copy of this last time, I can provide another one, on motion, I'll read the whole thing so it's clear in the record. On motion of Edward Santos, that the town authorized the Board of Selectment to petition in writing that the county commissioners adjudicate said way, namely Brook Street Extension, a section of Brook Street known as Audrey Lane, running from a point west of the intersection at Brook and Pine Streets for a distance of 5,052 feet to its connection with Williams Street, to be a private way, and that the town no longer, and I believe that looks like it's in, well, maybe it's in a tax, no longer be bound to keep the same in repair. That's what your lawyers talking about would give us, a public-private way. This is, they're saying, they're not saying in that motion anywhere that, A, they're even proposing abandonment, or that there was ever a two-thirds vote to do so. That's saying, "We don't want to pay to repair it anymore, and it's a discontinuance for maintenance purposes whereby it becomes a public-private way," which is what your lawyer says and agrees with. He's just not applying the same facts that we're working with. In my letter, what I'm particularly relying on is, and I'll give you this as well, this is the, this is what was given out to towns, this is a copy, this is what was given out to towns and was applicable in 1974 for the particular statute, which is Section 32A, which I cite, which is the petitioning of the county commissioners, and the case notes cite the cases that I kind of threw back at, at the town, which is this Coons versus Board of Selectment case, which says that if they, if they reduce the status from public to private, eliminating the burden of maintaining the way but leaving the public's right of access. Coons is good law. Nylander doesn't change that, and in fact, the case cited by your attorney says, the highest court basically restates the law, and I'm reading here, which I've starred for you, and I'll give you this copy. A legal discontinuance by town vote of a road or public way is to be distinguished from a discontinuance of maintenance under 82 Section 32A. And that's the 1994 edition, which we're not dealing with, this is an earlier edition. But it works the same way. Discontinuance of maintenance under 8232A, that statute, merely relieves a municipality of liability for care and maintenance of the road. It, unlike a formal discontinuance by town vote, which we didn't have here, does not extinguish the right of the public and abutting landowners, all the people on that road, to travel over the road, Coons versus Selectment of Deerfield, which is cited, and what, this is the document that's telling towns the procedure for the commissioners to deal with private, making public-private ways, and that's good law, which is what I cited in my opinion letter, and Nylander cites. Just a different, Nylander's just a different set of facts. Person has access to another road, they have no reason to go over there, they didn't have a prescriptive easement because they weren't landlocked, and the road was actually abandoned, either by two-thirds vote or whatever in 1879 you needed. But this road was never abandoned. This road was made a public-private way based on the language of the motion, which simply says, "No longer be bound to keep the same repair." It doesn't say to cease and exist, you know, to cease, to be abandoned. Those are the key words that you would, you would have to have, and you'd have to have a two-thirds vote. So, the road was never abandoned, it's a public-private way, everyone has access to it, and I think that's, that's clear factually. It's also, we have access by prescriptive easement because you'll see on the plans, this is clearly landlocked. The only way in and out of that parcel is Aubrey Lane, completely landlocked, there's no question of that. So, so your lawyer reiterates two ways that we would have access legally. We agree, we complete, we are both, you know, arm in arm singing kumbaya when it comes to the law. We have both of those factually, and so we think this is really a non-issue at this point for the board. We ask you make a finding that there's, there's access.
Well, you make a fine argument. Unfortunately, our attorney's not here to either agree or disagree with your argument, so I'm not comfortable making a finding of fact here. We're not a judge or a jury here, we're a planning board. Sir, you have a question?
It went against, on town record in 74, but it was on town record in 75 too. So, somebody has to check that out.
What happened in 75?
I don't remember, but I had a copy of that, I got it from the assessors' office.
Yeah, I actually moved back to the year 73.
But it was two towns. So, I don't know which one they used, and it was the month after that.
So, you're saying that there was a town vote?
I don't know. In 1975, it went to town, town meeting again. I don't know what was said in that, but he's using 74. I want to know what happened in 75.
Something happened in 73 also, right?
But it was two, one was 74 and 75.
Oh, 73.
Well, maybe it was, whatever. There's more than one time it was submitted.
If the road, for the heck of it, if the road was abandoned, doesn't half of the road go to one side and half of the road goes to the opposite side?
Correct, but all the abutters that are landlocked maintain a prescriptive easement to use both halves, to get in and out of their property.
I'm just saying, he's.
If the town can't frustrate the abutters or the landowners' use of their property by abandoning a road where they have no other, if they, you know, if it's a corner lot, they've got access on some other public way, you can do it, and then they'd each get half the road and it'd be done. But you can't take away that prescriptive easement.
Okay.
Which, which your lawyer cites, and I cite as well.
Sir?
Alan Bosley, 60 maybe, Pine Street. On that easement you're talking about, what is the intention of PJ or so? Why is this so important that that become part of that property?
It's not that it's part of the property, it's just our way in and out of our property.
So, you're going to be using Audrey Lane as your construction equipment to go up and down?
No, 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 just that little corner where, if you, I zoomed in on it today with my computer, I zoomed in real close, and most of their access is, is on their half of Audrey Lane, but not all of it. So, that is, that little piece of land is really the issue. There's also, wait, let me finish. There's also access from Pine Street as it exists, except there are wetlands in the way. Now, according to state law, I'm no conservation commission specialist or anything, but according to state law, it is, you are allowed to access your property by going over wetlands as long as you replicate those wetlands. So, we have to resolve this one way or another. I don't think we're going to resolve it tonight, so, so there are two ways to resolve it. One is to agree that you are correct with our attorney. Another is for you to decide that it's going to take a long time to reach consensus, so maybe a better route is to, to change the design of the entrance so that you're only accessing it by way of Pine Street. I don't know if that's possible engineering-wise, but that is an option. I think that, that in this case, I would like Kerry in her many hours of leisure during her workday to look into 1974 and 1973 and 1975 town meetings.
I got copies of both, both years.
Well, if you can.
I'll come down.
Bring, bring, the more, the more information there.
I do already have, because I did confirm his 1974, so 74 I do have. So, 73 and 75, you can provide a copy. I do have the annual reports downstairs in my office as well.
Sue, we have a, has the 1973 copy.
Yeah. I have all those annual reports in my office already, but I can certainly have her certify them if we need to, if I, if and when I find something.
So, what I would ask the board to do is to consider a condition of approval that before any, any construction, or before the building permit is issued, that we either obtain the. obtain, uh, the, um, town council's, uh, you know, a letter from town council confirming our opinion or a court order. Because we can, we can move, uh, uh, to get a, a court decision on this legal issue. It's a very simple one. I don't think it's going to be a problem whatsoever. Uh, the factually, the board is required to, to, to decide the facts. It, it, it is required to decide the facts, and I think there's enough in there with respect to law. I think the board can find that the land's clearly landlocked. The board can find that, uh, with what we've submitted and what the attorneys responded, there is nothing on record that there's been a two-thirds vote. Because even if there was one, let's just say there was one in 75. They've got to record it to make it valid by the statute.
Right.
So there, there's, there's nothing, there is nothing abandoning that road, um, from, from history up until a week, you know, three, three weeks ago when we got that title search back from KLM. So the board can make a, a finding that, and there's nothing in opposite of that, uh, that, um, uh, there is access. Or that the, or if the board needs to, make it a condition of approval that, that, uh, it'd either be confirmed, uh, through, uh, further conversations with town council or, and/or a legal opinion, because we'll file in court and, and have a judge decide. I think it'd be a very simple matter for a judge to decide, and, and my guess is town council would, when they look at the facts applied to the law, I think we all agree on the law. It's just the facts applied to them. We have completely different facts than Nylander. Completely different, and that's why I provided that case to you. So I normally wouldn't ask for that condition because getting town council to agree my P, since it took three weeks to get an opinion, I'd be a little worried about it, but this, I'm not at all worried about that. I think it's a, a very simple issue that's going to be resolved. And, and I think his letter speaks to the fact that, you know, he, he talks about the discontinuance for maintenance. Um, the only thing we know about, you know, i- i- is that this one, this one vote. And I, you know, once you've discontinued it for maintenance, I don't know why you'd vote on it after that or anything else. And why, why you would be taking a public way in 74 and discontinuing it for maintenance if it wasn't a public way, if something happened in 73 or two or one, makes no sense either. So, uh, I think that the, um, based on all the facts, rather than just, just have additional delay, I, I think it's clearly there's sufficient information before the board to make that decision and/or add the condition.
Ma'am?
Alan Goldsley, 1680 Pine Street. Um, I just want to go to this. Why our town's legal counsel disagrees, and I don't think that anything should be decided before we review it again, to review what he's saying today. Why would you do that when that's what our council is for? Is to do the reviews. As you stated, you're not lawyers, you're not the.
I don't know what it said, but I don't know why it would be something for 75 too.
You have another meeting in two weeks.
You don't have no, no easement too.
Ma'am?
Robert McCroy, 1650 Wheeler Street. But I have an interest in lot number 26. So just for clarification, just for my own information, is that a landlocked piece of land because you have frontage on Brook Street, at least the width of Pine Street? So is it landlocked technically? I mean.
This is this lot here?
No, 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 your lot.
Your lot.
Has frontage on Brook Street that's at least the width of Pine Street. But I see this, it's like the, it's the northeast, the eastern boundary. Am I seeing that correctly?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. There's a little portion of.
So that's frontage on a public road, right? So does that make it landlocked?
That is, that is one of the issues that our attorney raises.
That it's not actually landlocked, so that was.
He says, "Town should be aware however that the subject parcel lies across from the end of Pine Street, which I have been informed is a public way, and Attorney Pacella's client may legally access the subject parcel over Pine Street."
So, so we don't have 175 feet of frontage, which the map clearly shows. So we do not have sufficient access to a public way.
Question is, does he really need that in order to gain access? Does he have to have 175 feet?
No.
No.
Of course not.
No, that's to be a, a Form A law is what you're, what you're describing.
And all he needs is access.
Right.
Only feet.
Well, I mean, that's on the prescriptive easement issue.
This, this question is more directed towards Chris. After a fair amount of digging, I found the property marker for our, our property, and I put a little stake in there to designate that. According to the map, it almost looks like that road that they're putting in is going right at that corner. Is there any rule or regulation for their entrance or access road to be a certain distance away from the corner of our property?
I, I don't know.
Do you know where that road is going?
Well, I know, our access road is located within the layout that's associated with the right of way.
Right.
So to my knowledge, there's no regulation that would. I, it's just, it's an odd, such an odd instance that I don't think that there's a regulation that speaks specifically to that.
So your, so your trucks, your construction.
No, they, they're getting house, other houses in town, their property goes around the street.
Right.
So I believe that you can put a chute as close as you want to somebody's boundary line.
Don't you have to know that? I mean, not like, I'm not sure, I don't know. Don't we have to know these things for sure?
Know what things specifically?
The passage or the, you know, how much distance you may need. And the other question is, when, on the other page, at our corner, they have a little, like, um.
Half circle.
Half circle. I don't understand why that's the only corner that has like a half circle. Could you check that page, please, Chris?
Sheet two shows it, I believe. Sheet two? Are you talking, are this here?
Yes, yes.
So that came in off of the record plan. That's just how the record plan was drawn with a radii and, you know.
To me, that's going across their property.
Exactly.
I, I think it is, but.
It is because.
That's.
I have to go look at the property marker and plug it up.
And I don't, I would have to review the deed, but the, their prop, this is their property line here. And so the edge of our traveled way, if you will, is not on their property. Um, and that, that's the, will be the conservative. Again, I would have to see which course the deed follows, whether it's this curve or, or the, or the corner point here, but most of the lots within the subdivision, the record plan associated with that had this map on there. Um, and so to be consistent with the record plans, we had, we had to compile everything, kept that same map just for reference.
I mean, we can, I don't, I'm going to give my opinion. I'm not prepared to make any decisions tonight, so.
Can I make a motion to table for our next meeting?
Continue.
Or continue?
Can I finish my questions or not?
Sure.
All right, before you end. So I'm a little confused. You're saying, in your opinion, it is still a public way because it was not recorded? Or it is a private way because we voted on that, but it didn't? So are you saying that road is now public or private?
So I'll, I'll tell you what it is, okay? It was a public way.
I know, and what, and what you're saying is now.
Just hear me out, I'm going to give you the whole chronology. It was a public way recognized by the town. In 1974, uh, they discontinued it for maintenance and made it a public-private way in which every, the public as well as any abutter maintains a right of access as if it were a public way. They just don't have to pay, the town doesn't have to pay to maintain it.
So you're saying that is okay, that we made that change even though it wasn't recorded?
No, it was recorded.
That was recorded, no?
It's not recorded because it's not abandonment. You have to record an abandonment. So when the town decides to give up rights, either to property, reality, or to, to an easement, which it would have had a prescriptive easement because it was used for so long, then the town has to have a two-thirds vote and then record it under the statute. Uh, I think it's, uh, 40, Section 15.
So we did have the two-thirds vote, but we did not record it?
No, we didn't have, there was no motion to abandon it, there was no vote to abandon it, and that's why there's nothing recorded in the registry of deeds.
We haven't abandoned it.
So we've proven that there, it was never abandoned.
Right, so, but instead of abandoning it, we did vote to make it private and not public?
For maintenance.
Which leaves it as a public road still?
Private way is the term.
So the town is in charge of it or owns it? Or does our boundaries go out to the middle of it? Which happens?
The town never owned it.
Who owned it?
So the property owners own it, the town.
Our boundaries don't show that. Our boundaries stop, and then there's a space for Audrey Lane. So that's what I'm asking, is my boundary.
Well, then the town still owns it. If they, if they never, if they never voted by two-thirds and cut out a deed and, and, and gave it away, then the town would still.
So my deed does not go on to Audrey Lane?
I can't, I can't speak to your deed.
Well, you can see Audrey Lane is on, and so I just want to know.
That makes sense because it used to be a public way. So that makes sense.
Our boundaries are now going to go to the center of the road?
No.
No, they're not going to go to the center of the road.
That happens when it's abandoned. And it was never abandoned.
So we do not own the road then?
So your boundary is your boundary.
You, if you're a taxpayer, you do own the road, we all do.
Right.
Yeah, no, but you know what I mean technically, because people have talked about our boundaries are now going to go out to the center of the road on both sides.
They do not go to the center of the road.
That's not going to happen. Okay, and then last question, well, maybe enough to last, but. Next question is, we can use it, but I can't improve it. So to get up two lots past you, your lot.
No one's dealing with that, no one said that. So that, so the property owners will be responsible for improving it.
Excuse me?
The property owners, because the town gives up maintenance in 1974, the abutters are, are essentially responsible for maintaining it, to the extent that they decide to.
So if I decide not to maintain the, the part in front of my land, but you need to cross it to get to it, you can maintain that part in front of my land?
I, 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 I can't really speak to that, but I know there's a process for, uh.
Well, I'll make it down back to your pot, so if, if you don't mind me asking. So her pot is the north side of Audrey Lane. You can improve her pot and your side? Because that's what we're talking about then, we're not talking about my one.
We're not talking about any improvements, we're talking about access to his lot. You're talking about your lot as if we.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We don't want to talk about your lot.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
We only want to talk about this project.
So the example, there was a bad example. What I'm asking is, are they going to just drive across it with?
No.
Or they are going to improve Audrey Lane? So how are they going to go on their half of Audrey Lane?
They're going to improve it for their access. They're going to improve it for their access.
At that little corner.
Yeah, that's what she's asking, that's what she's asking.
Well, I misunderstood, I thought you meant improve the whole thing.
No, 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 no. I shouldn't have turned it into that example, so I, because.
The little.
Her property is not mine, so I didn't want to speak for mine.
The improvements are as shown on the plan in that little corner.
And they can improve the width of Audrey Lane for the town?
If he is correct and our attorney is incorrect, then he can improve it to the extent it's shown on the plan if we allow it.
If you allow it.
If we don't allow it, it's because we're, we're voting against the project.
Why didn't David Gates say it?
What's that?
Why didn't David Gates?
He is not the attorney that, that's involved in this.
Oh, he didn't write that law?
No, no.
Peter, just a question.
Sure, please.
Who owns the land?
We don't know.
Who owns it?
Nobody knows.
So you're, that's what I'm asking you, that was going to be my question, Peter. In your opinion, with, um, your legal expertise, who do you believe owns that land, Audrey Lane?
It's, I, I didn't look at that issue, but I, I looked at the issue of whether or not it was ever abandoned, and the deeds would describe who owns what.
So you would, you would revert back to say pre-1974, say the town owned Audrey Lane, and still does?
It depends what the deeds say.
But you didn't check that deed? You haven't looked at that deed? Wouldn't that be important?
No. No, because the, 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 what your deed shows with respect, whether your deed meets in the middle of that lane or not, the town had a right to use it for umpteen years, had made it a public road, and then rolled it back to discontinue maintenance to a public-private way. And so that right stays regardless of, the, the town had a permanent easement that it left in place because it didn't abandon it, but said, we're not going to repair it anymore. That's up to you guys.
That easement may have been conveyed by a pilgrim.
Right.
But I don't think the town ever maintained it, did they?
Well, neither does the lady that's maintained it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been maintained for over 35 years.
Yeah.
For, for Mrs. Andrews, the Andrews property and my property.
Right.
But as the, as we were just talking about another project earlier, the town must have received rights or, or deed for the property in order to stop doing ma- well, should have.
But they didn't. It was probably in 1974, it was probably a cart path, a little more than one, and it was, and, and in 1874, it was a little more than a cart path. It was for farming and haying, and in 1774, it was to keep the, the British out, who knows? But the point is, is that it was there, and it was, it was a legal road that may have been through Farmer Jones either side of the farm, but it was still a way for, for the townspeople to traverse that piece of land to get from that corner to William Street.
So I agree with that easement. I agree that there would be an easement, I just don't know. I think we should know who owns it, because can they improve her? If, if her half is, belongs to her by deed.
It doesn't.
Okay, so it doesn't?
No, not by deed. No, it's just.
So it's all up in the air, who owns it?
Well.
It was actually, you could not get up that path and Mr. Pacillo.
I understand that, I understand that.
Right, approached me about it and I agree with that.
I understand that.
Right, because of him having property up there, right? And plus aesthetically, it was better for me.
Right.
So.
So you may have a claim for adverse possession, for all I know.
I don't think, I don't believe adverse possession was coming to play here because it was a, Mr. Pacella? I don't believe adverse possession would come into play because it was a town-owned land or what?
You can't take the town's property or easements.
Yeah, it's, there you go.
If it was private, if it was a private property, if they owned it.
So it's, it doesn't matter who owns it. It's an easement that all the townspeople have an access. The landowners of that piece of land are townspeople, they have access, so.
But I don't know if we have the right to change it, to make it drivable if it's not, is what I'm asking.
So you want cars to go up?
No, I don't want cars. No, 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 I'm just. So what I'm saying is.
You want the town to pay for it?
No, no.
It's definitely not going to happen.
You want sewer water?
So what I'm asking, Woody.
I'm listening.
Okay.
I'm not laughing at you.
Okay. Just because, so no, I do not want a road there. But I'm asking, just because I have a right of way does not mean you are giving me the right to put down gravel or change the road or asphalt it.
Or maintain it with grass?
Reeds.
As is, mow it as it is. Do you, am I making any sense?
I don't know.
Do they have, so do they have the right to change?
That's going to take.
The side of the road that they've been maintaining is grass? And then you spoke to the last solar farm that didn't do anything it was supposed to do and left the big mess.
My expectation, expectation is that we're going to continue this to the next meeting, and at the next meeting, our attorney will be here and can answer the questions
That would be a great idea.
That we are struggling to answer because we're not an attorney, and he has a different interest than our town council.
Right, and that was my fear that he was going to talk you into using his facts, but they're not necessarily our facts.
Well, we're going to get to the facts, but I'm not.
Not tonight.
Oh, that sounds fair to me.
So someone was going to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to continue this meeting until our next scheduled meeting, which is December 13.
19.
No, December 19.
December 19.
December 19.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will have our attorney here for the next meeting unless, for some reason, like.